All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our February 3, 2025, regular council meeting to order. Before we get to the presentations, if everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilman Underwood to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. As you can see, we do have a pretty exciting evening on tap. Some of our favorite presentations tonight, the fire prevention poster contest, and tonight we'll also acknowledge some anniversaries within the fire company. We really, really enjoy doing this. And just, you know, as we think about tonight and as we move forward, tonight we're going to recognize 125 years of service within the fire company, and I think that's something that I'm not sure how many communities can say they get that much volunteerism just in recognizing a group every year like this. So, very fortunate in the town to have the public safety people we have, and we certainly appreciate it, and we hope that, you know, you enjoy tonight. What we're going to do first is the fire marshal was walking around, and there he is behind. I'm going to turn it over right now to the fire marshal, who's going to take us through the fire prevention poster contest winners. Good evening.
All right, good evening. On behalf of the Fire Marshal's Office, the Connecticut Fair Plan, we have two recipients who did an amazing job. Guys back there, you can't see it. These are the two posters, one from Emma and one from, I should have known that, one from Emma and one from Maya. They both won the county level, Hartford County. They've now passed on to the state level for further judging, and then hopefully to move on, and one of these posters could potentially be on next year's 2026 fire prevention calendar. Each year, we select one fourth and one fifth grade winner. This year happened to be both from Wheeler. So the first one I'm going to bring up is Emma Blanco.
Hi, Emma. On behalf of the Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Committee, we want to present you with the certificate for the first place poster for your grade. You did a great job, as you can see. It's moved on to the next level. I haven't heard back yet, but once I do, we'll let you know. And then we've also got you, as promised, a $75 gift certificate to Amazon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm just going to cut in, just for those that are getting awards tonight, just make sure you're up there long enough so mom or dad or whoever's taking pictures can get all the pictures they want.
And Sarah.
And Sarah. Sarah, wave your hand, so, yep.
Did you, do you want to, after now?
After.
Okay. And then also from Wheeler School is Maya Wojtek. There we go. All right. Again, on behalf of the Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Committee, we'd like to reward you this certificate for a job well done.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Congratulations to the winners. I understand that, you know, sitting through a council meeting may be something on your bucket list, but we also understand it may not. So if you do need to leave and go home and do homework, we understand, but at this point, we're going to move forward with the fire company. I'm going to ask Councilman Underwood, and we also have State Representative Rebecca Martinez here tonight, who have some proclamations to present. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Underwood with an assist from our state representative.
So have some proclamations tonight from behalf of myself and Senator Henry Martin. The first one is for Taylor Doughty. Your 10 years of loyal and dedicated service with the Plainville Fire Department, on behalf of the citizens of Plainville and the state of Connecticut, we thank you for all of your years of hard work, bravery, and outstanding efforts in helping to keep your fellow citizens and communities safe.
Tell you what we're going to do, we're going to call the fire department one at a time, and when you come up front, stay here because we want to get pictures. The first award is for 10 years, Taylor Doughty.
Who's not here?
He's not here.
So can I take your award?
Sure.
I'll take your award.
What's that?
Do you have one for Taylor?
Absolutely.
Yes, as you can see, we practiced this a lot before we started the meeting, so just bear with us, you know. The second award is Jacob Marinowski, 10 years. Second award is Lieutenant Noel Roach, 10 years.
Thank you very much for your service.
Darrell Sally, 10 years. He's not here. The next one is a 20-year award to Reverend Alvin Clayton.
Appreciate your service.
The next one's a 25-year award, Second Assistant Chief David Massey.
Thank you very much for your service.
The next one is a 40-year, 40 years of service, Chief Thomas Mocini. We have a chair for him. Now, it's like a designer, I mean, designer wear. We had to choose three or four different ones. How's it feel, Tommy? Feels good? 40 years of service, and these guys are great. They went to 800, and what, two calls in 2024? 802 calls in this volunteer fire department, put their lives on the line every time they go out. You have some proclamations you would like to read other than the one?
I assisted you, so I gave my proclamation because you did your award.
That's great, thank you very much. I want to thank the fire department for all their service. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Do we need, hold on, do we need pictures? Hold on, you can't go yet. We need pictures, yep, just like the kids. We need to keep you there for pictures. And while they're taking pictures, just on behalf, you know, to piggyback on what Councilman Underwood said, you know, clearly, we're, clearly, we are very lucky in town to have you guys as volunteers, and certainly appreciate the work. It doesn't, our appreciation certainly doesn't begin and end with the night like tonight, but we look forward to next year where we maybe break 125 years of service, we'll see. But thank you for being here. And again, as I said with the poster winners, I understand most of you probably want to sit through a council meeting, but if you have other things that are more important, we understand if you have to, have to take off. But thank you again, congratulations to everybody. All right, so what we're going to do now is, we don't have any public hearing scheduled for this evening. We can move right to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to approve the January 21, 2025, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any comments, questions, any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item for announcements and reports.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Some chamber news, there will be a ribbon cutting in Plainville at Little Scholars Learning Academy. I didn't write down the date on my notes, so give me a sec. On February 18, from 11:30 to 12:30 at 17 Farmington Avenue. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else with any announcements or reports?
No.
In between. All right, we will close item four, and we can move right to item five, appointments and resignations.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Getteman.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Dawn Labella from Charter Revision Commission and appoint John Gasparini, 7 Orchard Lane, to the Charter Revision Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item two.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the town manager's reappointment of Lisa Lozier to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2029, Lynell Noble to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2029, and Randall Paz to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2029.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, are there any other appointments or resignations?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint the following members to the Inland-Wetland Commission for the term 1725 to 1727. They are Patricia LeBue, Karen Kowalczek, and Cheryl Gonzalez.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone else with any appointments or resignations this evening? All righty, we can move right past Board of Education Liaison, and we can move to the report of the town attorney. Good evening, yes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report this evening, we've been busy. That's about it. We got meetings this week of Charter Revision as well as the Fire Department Review Committee, but nothing for tonight, thank you.
Any questions, anything for the town attorney before we move on? All right, thank you, and that brings us to item eight, report of the town manager.
Yes, sir, good evening. Item number one is actually a presentation, I did provide some, some notes, and I think you have additional flyer in front of you, but if you would, I'd like to invite Sneha Leheru and Lynn Davis up to the podium to make a brief presentation on the Plainville Coalition, the Positive Youth Development and program that they're working on, and give you a brief on that. So if you wouldn't mind coming forward, and I think we're loaded up here on the screen behind me, and I think this is, you know, some great information, a valuable service to the community, and this, tonight, will be the launching pad for their, their program, and hopefully a lot of publicity around this, so.
Good evening, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you, Town Manager Paulus and Mr. Sarioli and Town Council for inviting us to come out tonight. We are extremely excited to share with you a very special project that our coalition has been working on for the past year or so, but we wanted to take the opportunity first to just give you a little background and context, I promise it'll take a minute or two, I'm just going to hit on some of those bullet points, and just share with you who we are as a coalition, the scope of our work, and just kind of what led us to this project. So, in terms of who we are, believe it or not, we were established as a coalition back in 2004, so we're over 20 years now in Plainville. Our coalition membership, and we have a couple of members here in the audience with us, and we thank them for being here, but it's a very broad group of stakeholders that truly represent Plainville. We've got town leadership on the coalition, we've got Board of Education leadership, we've got community members, we have student voice whenever we can, representatives from the business community, we have some retired folks, so it truly is a true coalition. But the one commonality, our collective focus, is to really just try to do whatever we can to support the positive development of our youth here in Plainville. That's been our goal and our mission. Sneha and I have the pleasure of co-chairing the coalition, and our meetings here are actually the first Monday of every month, we meet right here in the municipal center, first Monday of the month, for about an hour. If we need additional meetings, we schedule those out, if we have subcommittee work, we do that as well, and we typically follow the school district calendar, so like September to June. Summertime is for planning, we do some of our forward planning over the summer, and that's kind of the way we roll. Our funding for the coalition is provided through our local PLC, our local prevention council.
And for our region, it's Amplify.
So who we serve, so again, I said, we have a broad base of representation in our coalition, and we have that collective focus on positive youth development, but to operate kind of efficiently and effectively, we like to provide kind of a framework for ourselves, and we update that as we need to based on whatever's on the landscape that we'd like to address and support. So our current three areas of focus include mental health supports, and that became a real big one, particularly as we got into the COVID years, but it's definitely hung on as something that we, one of those top areas that we try to support all the way around. The second area is marketing and visibility, because we figured if no one knows who the coalition is, and they're not going to be able to take advantage of our resources that we have to share. So we've been trying to do some work around marketing branding and visibility of our group. And our third area of focus is prevention, so that substance use prevention. And again, I promise you, we'll move really quickly through this, I won't read all of these initiatives to you, but I wanted to just give you a snapshot, over the past 20 years, just to show you the scope, the breadth of the work and the types of projects that the coalition works on. Everything from internet safety programming for students and families, that's a big one because that changes all the time. We have an embedded column in our five principals newsletters for our five schools in Plainville, so we have that constant pipeline of information sharing to parents through that Coalition Corner newsletter piece. Student design of the coalition logo, I have that bolded, and we have the arrow pointing down to that lower right-hand corner, and you can see our new brand, almost brand-new logo. That was student-designed, and we worked on that last year as part of our marketing, and we said, what better way to kind of get a refreshed look than to get some students working on this with us? So we kind of cast the net to our middle school students, and a shout-out to faculty member from the Art Department at the middle school, Laura Meehan, who helped kind of facilitate the, the contest. But we had quite a few entries for the logo design contest, and our coalition members got together, we went through the, the entries that came in, and we narrowed it down to two, and we liked elements from both of them, so we said, you know, what a great chance for the kids to do some more collaboration. So we gave them a little bit more feedback and said, can you create a hybrid design together and kind of bring it back to us and see what that looks like? And there it is. We're very pleased with the outcome, we love the logo, we really think it represents who we are as a group, and you'll see it in the presentation tonight, in our guide that you'll see shortly, and in the materials that we put out when we're around town, whether we're at a community event, or in an open house, or what have you. So that's, that was a very collaborative, kind of nice project, working with the kids on that piece. And I'm going to skip right down that list to the Community Resource Guide, because that's really what we're here about tonight, and we don't want to take up your whole evening, but I'm going to turn the microphone over to Sneha, who'll give you a little bit more specific background on the guide and how we got to it, and a little kind of drive-through of the guide itself, so thank you.
Okay, so we're here tonight to do the presentation for our Community Resource Guide. So, to get into the important part of the why, why are we creating this guide? There, with our diverse group, a reoccurring topic that came up was, where do we send our families, our community members, when they're in need of resources? So, a lot of the questions that we would get, and a lot of the comments that we would get, is, if my kid's in a crisis, what am I supposed to do? I could sit there on Google, but they're going to show me all of these topics, half of them aren't even in town, half of them don't take my insurance, what do I do? So collectively, as a coalition, we created this guide to make essential resources more accessible to our community, to our community members, when they need it. So, we created this guide over the past year, we've been collecting resources from our group, we've been doing research, we've been making Excel spreadsheets, we've been talking to our, our biggest supporters of all of this, which Hitchcock Printing, who kind of took our idea and ran with it. So what we've created is an interactive document for the Plainville community that is housed on the town website and on the schools' website, and this is a resource guide that gives them all the mental health resources that you can think of. All of these resources have been vetted, so we know and they're verified that they cover Plainville families, and it's all in a collective document. So to best summarize it, this covers everything from basic necessities, so where to go for food assistance, where to go for housing, where to go for behavioral health services, where to go for substance use support, we've put in the urgent crisis care centers, everything is in this interactive document that we have created, that's going to be updated quarterly. So we are officially launching our campaign for this resource guide today with, with this presentation. We've also talked to Mike and Sarah, it's going to be a part of the managers' minutes on Monday, so we've done a hard launch of February 10 for our resource guide. So what that exactly means is, when we created this guide, we wanted accessibility in mind, but we also wanted discreteness, because we understand how difficult it is to ask for help. So you will see the flyer that we point, we put in front of each of your seats, has a QR code. You scan that QR code, it will take you directly to our guide. We also created business cards out of it, so it's a little more discreet, giving it to families instead of giving them flyers. We've ordered placards like this that you'll see, these stands, they have a slot for the business cards here, they will be in various town departments and every front office at the schools. We have bigger posters made of this that will be laminated, that will be put in the hallways of the police department, the hallways down here in the main offices. We wanted to make this as easy and as accessible as possible. Andy, if you don't mind switching it over. So we wanted to show you the physical document itself. We tried to make it as interactive and as easy as possible, so a lot of the features in this, oh, it still works on clicker, huh? So a lot of the features in our documents, so when you open it, this is what you're going to see. A lot of the features are interactive, so if you open this on a desktop, any of the table of contents that you click, it will take you directly to that page, so you don't have to scroll through the entire document. This is also something that will be, you will easily be able to save onto your phone, you can bookmark the tab in your internet portion, we've created magnets, so you could stick it on your fridge, everything is interactive. The font is really small, I apologize for it, if you guys scan the QR code, you'll get the actual document. The organizations itself, when you click the organization, it will take you directly to their website. If you click the phone number in your phone, it will show up immediately in your phone app, so all you have to do is hit call, and you'll be connected directly with whichever organization you're trying to call. Each organization, we tried to include a description of what services they provide, and we made it as easily as possible, so when you click the website, it'll pop right up on your phone. We have the intention, and we plan to update this quarterly as we move forward. One of the things that we did notice that is missing from this is senior services that we plan on including in the next quarter update. There's just a lot of resources to compile, and we weren't able to complete that in time for this first launch, but we understand the importance of it, and it is on our agenda to have for the next update. But everything in this document has been triple-checked, every phone number has been called, every link has been clicked. We've put a lot of time and effort into this, and we're excited to be able to put this out into the community, so we just wanted to give you a brief presentation on what exactly we've been working on, so.
Well, thank you, congratulations.
This is amazing.
I think this is very valuable, and I don't, I don't know if you said it and I missed it, but is this something like the QR code, like you could put it in the schools as well?
Yeah, so the intention is, I think we've ordered 10,000 business cards, so we plan to have them in every single school.
Yeah, they'll be in these.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll be in those. We've also sent out an email to admin, so they will have a stack of these that they could give out to staff at their discretion. They'll be given to every guidance counselor, every social worker, every school psychologist. We have 1,000 set aside for the police department currently, so they will have their own stack, we will make sure to have this replenished, and we've designed it in a way that we won't have to change the QR code, so it's something that we could just reorder as we need it.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions, anybody have any comments or questions? Yes?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say I love the logo.
Yeah, yeah.
That is great, that it came, you know, from a collaborative effort with, with children and students, that's great, and also, if you wouldn't mind, if, maybe you said this, how often is the, the guide updated?
We're going to update it quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yes.
Perfect, that's great, thank you.
We did put a caveat in the, in the actual guide, in the first initial welcome page, that if there is an organization that we've left out, they can contact me directly, I put my contact information in it, and we'll make sure that it's updated in the next quarter.
All right, yes.
Just want to say thank you for doing this, I think it's going to be very valuable, you know, you know, obviously directly to the people who may need assistance, but it really behooves everyone to be familiar with it and know it's there, because, you know, it could be a relative, or friend, a friend of a friend, and knowing this is there is something you can refer people to, and I think it has a lot of value in that sense as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This was, this is amazing, I'm sure this was a lot of work, so thank you, but another suggestion, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but to get it out there was to, to put it in that Plainville magazine, since it goes to every Plainville household, you know, you could just put this, you know, like as a page, and then every household is getting it as well.
That's a great idea, actually, I didn't even think of that. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
No, thank you for doing it. So yeah, this is great.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've got to say, I've been part of the coalition for, I think, seven years, maybe eight, and this is by far the best project I've seen. Like I said today at the meeting, that a lot of times we felt like we're spinning our wheels, not really making any headway, this is huge. Thank you both, but I, I can't, I can't express how awesome I think this is, yeah, great job.
Good.
If you ever need any help, don't hesitate to reach out, you know?
Thank you, we truly appreciate your support.
Definitely.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, well, good luck, and look forward to those quarterly updates, and as Councilwoman Christopher said, any support we can give you, please feel free to reach out.
Wonderful, thank you again.
Thank you.
Can we get a business card for each council member?
We actually don't have them currently, I apologize for that.
Oh, that's okay.
When we have them, hopefully next week.
Soon as we get them, yep.
Give them to the town manager.
I'd say.
Thank you very much for that.
See, I was going to, I was planning on giving each of you like 20 of them, to hand out.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so back, we're, item number two.
Yes, sir, item number two, ever-source rate discussion. This was a topic that came up at the last meeting, there was a general consensus to support at least drafting of a resolution to petition the state of Connecticut for economic relief from the rising electric bills. So I took a stab at putting together a draft resolution for your consideration and possible approval. The resolution recognizes the history of deregulation and the complex nature of the energy markets, but as you note, it does not outline a specific recommendation for providing relief. And so, that is in your packet, and certainly, I understand that there might be further discussion and/or tweaking of the document. I wasn't pushing that it get resolved tonight, if you want to, that's entirely, you know, the body's decision, if you want to approve it, but thought maybe there might be a, a word or two that you, you want to modify or change, so I'm, I'm open to that, and, and ready to make notes on any changes you may like to make at this time, so.
Why don't we open it up then, here, we'll, we'll have some discussion, is, I know a couple requests or a couple notes were passed on to you already. I don't know if you, do we want to move forward with this tonight? We can certainly put it on the agenda for our next regular meeting, and that'll give everyone a couple more weeks to provide any feedback to the town manager if they want, it's up to you guys, let me know what you think.
I think that would be reasonable, it's always good to have the final copy in front of us, before we take a vote, I think.
Okay, I agree.
All right, so I guess the plan would be, you know, any additional feedback, please get to the town manager, and we'll have this on the agenda, and I believe it will be, is it a holiday?
The 18th.
So it'll be the 18th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 18th?
We'll put it on for the 18th, and I, I can- We'll put it on for the 18th, and I can just say that in talking with members, I have two notes already, just that this is a, on the bottom of the resolution, obviously this is a legislative impura. I named the governor as well. I'm not sure that he has a role to that, so I can certainly take that out. And the reference to the electricity costs, it really is, maybe should put it into broader context of energy costs. So those are the two notes that I have, and I'd be happy to take any other comments or notes and then prepare, or redraft it and prepare for the 18th.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Me too.
Okay, great.
All right.
Item number three, I'm happy to report on the emergency management grant application. This grant application is submitted on an annual basis. It covers a portion of personnel cost of the fire marshal who serves as the emergency management director, the EMD. The deadline for submission is March of 2025, and there's an item under new business to approve and authorize the town manager to submit an application for funding. Item number four, staffing updates. I thought I'd take an opportunity to bring you up to speed. I know the council has the opportunity to swear in police officers, but we do a lot more hiring than just police officers, and those are the individuals that you get to see and meet. But we have had a lot of activity within human resources, and I just wanted to give you a highlight. We've had higher-than-expected level of change within the town's various departments, and I wanted to take a moment to bring you up to date. Library Director Trish Tomlinson has left, and I'm working with Human Resources and Library Chair on interviewing her successor. I'm happy to report that we have concluded interviews and we have made a conditional offer and hoping that that works out as well. So we've made some progress on that. And the Assistant Library Director Carrie Burgess left the town, and we promoted Leah Smith, the former head of youth services, to that position. The Town Planner Mark DeVoe has announced his retirement for March of this year. The job has been posted and we are actively recruiting applicants, and the job closes this week on the 7th. So we're hoping that our final push in terms of marketing and/or reach will bring in a few additional applicants. It is a tough market out there, and to be looking for these department head levels is rather tough. The Assistant Building Official John Polinetta joined the town this week from the town of Wallingford. We are excited to expand our building department staffing ability to provide the services to the community. As many of you know, that Krista Toll has been a one-man department and just barely keeping his head above water in terms of the growth, in terms of permits and development. On the Office Professional, the Office of Professional in the Building and Engineering Department, Kevin Hullett, left in December. Recently hired Ben Nazzo, who started in January, and that is working out well. So we'll continue to work on those positions that we need to fill, and hopefully we'll find a great candidate for planning as we did for the library director.
Okay.
Item number five is the public hearing for the budget. Traditionally, the public hearing is held on a Thursday, but this year I needed to move it to a Tuesday, and I'm requesting the town council set a public hearing date for Tuesday, March 4th at 7:00 PM to hear comments on the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. And there's an item under new business to set a public hearing date for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the municipal center. And at this point, I'll entertain any further questions. If not, I will turn it over to Andy for happenings.
All right, any comments or questions for the town manager? Just real quick, are any, the middle school project, are bids, when is the next bid due? I don't know if we have that, if you have to get back to me. I just, I was asked a question over the weekend and I didn't know what date the bids were due.
Yep. Go ahead.
Yeah, currently, we are out for an RFQ slash P for a construction manager at risk. We recently had our mandatory site visit last week, and we're asking all bids or responses to be in by Wednesday, February 19th.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Andy's been doing some great work on this. It's a complex, as you can imagine, a complex. The information that you need in for a construction manager at risk is pretty extensive, so I applaud his efforts for that. He's really had the point on that.
Okay.
We're coming along, and I think the, I think the committee is interested in, I think, just to tell you, there were eight in the mandatory walkthrough, so that's a pretty robust, I wouldn't imagine that many are going to shake out of that process. I could imagine maybe one, but that's going to be, so that's going to be a robust response that we get just from the show of who came for the walkthrough. And the toughest part will be getting down to four, that's your review, which is the max that the state sets in terms of the process.
Okay.
So I don't think that, you know, with eight, that's a very healthy pool of, I mean, no guarantee that all eight will do it, but I'm pretty sure we'll get seven, maybe if not eight.
No, that's encouraging.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward, definitely.
All right. We're ready for happenings? Next.
Great, so am I. All right, so the Plainville Food Pantry is hosting an event called Dueling Pianos. The event is going to be on Saturday, February 22nd, 2025, at the AquaTurf in Southington. For more information on tickets, you can contact Susie Wertz at 860-747-1919, or you can visit plainvillesfoodpantry.org. And from the Plainville Senior Center, and for all programs related to the Senior Center, you can call 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first is the income tax preparation appointment. Signups for 2025 have already begun, and the Plainville Senior Center will be doing this through AARP Tax Aid and VITA Tax Aid. The programs are free and they provide income tax preparation by a certified volunteer tax counselor to those with low to moderate income. Appointments will be on Tuesdays, February 4th through Tuesday, April 8th, and on Fridays, starting on January 31st, going through April 11th. As I said, appointments are required, so please call the Senior Center to make an appointment. A lunch and learn will be held on the topic of senior bullying. This is on Tuesday, February 4th at noon. Lunch program is sponsored by the National Healthcare Associates, the Pines at Bristol Center for Health and Rehabilitation. They'll be hosting a movie matinee. The movie is My Penguin Friend, rated PG, on Wednesday, February 12th at 2:00 PM. The 50th Anniversary Scrapbook Day with Sean. This is on Thursday, February 13th, from 3:15 PM to 4:15 PM. And this is to kick off the center's 50th anniversary with a walk down memory lane as they display 50 years of scrapbooks and they share stories reminiscing. Sign up, please sign up in advance. And the last item is vintage Valentines and sweets. This is on Friday, February 14th at 11:00 AM. You are invited to attend an in-person gathering to see and hear about a collection of vintage Valentines, which are owned by one of the seniors' members, the senior center's members, and the oldest Valentine dates back to 1916. So you can tune in and visit and check that out. That's all the happenings I have today.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one other item, just go back to the notice of hearing for proposed budget and the budget season. In this process, we also look at the grand list growth, and I just wanted to give a heads-up to the council that this year was not as robust as I thought we would have and was hoping to have. So we're going to be double-checking the numbers on that, but it looks as though less than half a percent growth, so 0.39%, which is not where we expected, not where I was hoping to be. And so that's going to have some bearing on getting into the budget process. So that, obviously, and in terms of revenue, that and where things shake out with the governor and the legislature in terms of funding for whether, you know, mainly the Board of Education side and likely ECS only.
Yep.
But there may be potentially significant increases there, maybe no increase at all, I don't know, but that, those are sort of the key indicators we look for with respect to revenue. How much is coming in from the state? How much are we generating on a grand list growth? So unfortunately, the not-so-good news is the grand list did not live up to what I thought it would.
All right. And regarding, we do have our, I hope our state representative's taking notes over there on some of that other stuff.
Well, I'm glad she is present because one of the hits, in addition to motor vehicle hit that we took, there were three areas that we saw significant increase, if you will. Insurance was a big hit for us, an increase. The motor vehicles dropped significantly, so that it's a major issue for us. And there was a law passed on the veterans exemptions. I'm not sure that anyone had any inkling as to the impact that that would be, and is significant. Millions of dollars.
All right.
In terms of the gross of the grand list kind of thing, not actual net dollars.
Dollars, yeah.
Right. So it's a calculation, so.
Okay.
But it was a major increase, so, you know, something like, I think, I'll get the numbers for you when we go through it, but a magnitude of, you know, we may have had a million dollars worth of exemption, we now have $4 million.
Okay. All right, so it is significant.
It bears out.
Yep.
I mean, you know, I support veterans and the notion, it's a great thing to do, but there is an impact, that's all.
Yep, okay.
Michael, I got a question for you. Did the grand list go up due to real estate values going up? I mean, you can't get a house anymore for under $300,000.
Yeah, I don't, David, I don't know the, where the, where that's generated from, if it was on the commercial side or the residential side, but that's certainly a question we can get into when we, I'll look for an answer on that. Because I'm curious myself, I don't know how that broke down in terms of commercial or residential, I don't know yet.
I would assume that it went up both residential and commercial, it would offset some of these areas that you're talking about.
Yeah. I'll try to get you some detail on that.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anyone else before we open up public comment? All right, seeing that there's three of you in the audience at this point in the meeting, if anyone wishes to address the council, they may do so. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Please give your name and address. The first ring means you have 30 seconds left. The second ring means the three minutes has counted down. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? And seeing no one, what I am going to probably do, can I hold you the three minutes? Probably not. Well, why don't we do, why don't we invite, State Representative Martinez does have an update that she wants to give to the council tonight, and instead of waiting to other discussions of interest, why don't you just come up now and we'll have you give your update? And if you want to hand out your, the information you brought, we can handle that as well.
All right, so I did bring with me.
Just your name and address, please. Sorry.
Rebecca Martinez, 8 Irving Street, Plainville. So I did bring with me a major issues report, and I will make sure that all of you guys have that. It also has all of my contact information and I'm more than willing to talk to the council as a whole, or please feel free to always reach out to me. Just two issues I did want to touch base with you on tonight is, one is obviously electricity, big issue, complicated issue. I've seen a lot on social media, unfortunately, I think some people get fragmented information there of, you know, just getting rid of the public benefit, but there is a lot to that. So I just wanted to let you know, I am not on the Energy Committee. I am anxiously awaiting to see what proposals they are coming up with, but I have really started to dig into it myself, and I just, you know, I do completely understand it. We are an electric-only household, so we're at over $900 a month. So when I say I am prepared to ensure that we're doing everything that we can to lower that cost, I really do mean it. So what I've looked into is the largest portion, up to 200 million, is allocated, this is of the public benefits charge, is allocated to the Home Energy Efficiency Program, which is a great program. It does a lot of green energy and it does a lot of great things. But I do think that audits could be made more often and that there may be able to be some unnecessary costs eliminated. So I am advocating for the audits to be transferred to the auditors of public accounts, who I feel would be thorough and assertive in their reviews. Also looking at gold plating and transmission, which is involving increasing the power of the Connecticut Siting Council to prevent some inflated project costs, as well as I've signed on to a bill to enhance grid technologies, which is supporting technologies that reduce energy loss during transmission, making the energy grid more efficient and reducing overall costs. So I think this is something that we've been seeing go up and up and up, and it's something we really need to take action on. So I just wanted to do something to get right to work, and I'm, you know, anxious to work along with the Energy Committee on that. And the other update I did want to give is special education funding. They are going to be having some listening sessions with the chairs of the Senate and the House for this new special education committee. They are looking at ways to fund special education because we know that that is a huge cost of the municipal budgets. So I am going to forward all of the listening sessions information. I do believe it was already sent to the superintendent, but I'll reach out to you and just make sure that they have all of that information. And then I do know it is short notice, but I did want to invite both Michael and Andy, if you guys are available, on Wednesday to come here, the governor's budget address. It's 12 o'clock at the Capitol. Please come join me, and if not, then I will reach out immediately after and get you all of the numbers and the updates as soon as possible. So that's it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Will you take a question if there's a question? Does anyone have a question? No? All right. Very good, thank you for that. And I take it those, the pamphlet you left, those, that gives you a little bit more information? We'll make sure we hand those out before we leave tonight. Thank you. All right, so what we can do is, we don't have any old business to handle tonight, we can move right to item 11, new business.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to adopt a resolution regarding the Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Second. Motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Tuesday, March 4th at 7:00 PM regarding the town manager's fiscal year 2026 proposed budget.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, I'm fighting the cloth off here. All right, item three, and this is the town clerk's favorite time of the year.
Mr. Chair.
Second to early voting, right? Yes, Councilwoman Maranti.
Mr. Chair, a motion to establish the following special meetings of the town council for the purpose of considering and acting upon the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget, March 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, and 19, 2025, in the municipal center at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, that completes new business. Any other discussions of interest? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify the discussion I think we had on, or questions around the warming centers, and we currently only have the library that's during our operation, hours of operation. We'll continue to look at other opportunities, but they had mentioned, police department certainly isn't going to turn somebody away if they need assistance and/or is going to be, you know, need to shelter in the lobby until we get, you know, appropriate assistance, nor the municipal center, depending on the timing and if we're open and so forth. So it's an item that was still under review, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. All right, any, yes.
Just a comment on that. Maybe we could look into maybe partnering with a church or something like that.
Yeah.
You know? I know it's a little late this year, but maybe for, in preparation for next year.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When Gail was here last week, resident, I don't know her last name, I'm sorry to say, I know she lives on CNC Court. She had mentioned, her heart went out to these people that were freezing out in the woods last week at 5 below zero with windshield factors. And so I look. And so I looked into it, and I found out in the past, and I don't know if this is true, that the police department would know where these people are, and they would go out there and talk to them and ask them if they wanted transportation to a warming center in New Britain, surrounding area, Southington, Farmington, wherever they're located. And I think that's what the town manager was referring to, that he hasn't gotten an answer yet, but I think that most of the police officers know where these people are out in the woods. And when you have Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development, and you're thinking about that, and you're thinking in your mind, seeing these kids out there in tents because they don't have any place to go, I think this should be established, and as soon as possible, that the police department will, will know where these people are, and in the event of a cold, cold weather below zero, they should go out there, wherever they are, and ask them if they want some assistance, because I just can't fathom in my mind, people living in tents at 5 below zero or colder. So I just wanted to know, I really believe that the police department could be a bigger aid than maybe what they're doing now, maybe they are doing it, I don't know, but something we should look into.
Very good, yes. Anyone else? Any other comments, questions under other discussions of interest? All right, we have nothing for executive session, we're at the point where we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, we'll see everyone on Tuesday, February 18th, due to the holiday on the 17th.